All right, good morning. We're calling this meeting RPC Board of Commissioners. Order, would Debbie please call the roll?
Yes, Steve Summers.
President.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Mayor Youspulu.
Here.
Mayor Feinman.
Here.
Jennifer Lo.
Here.
Jeff Wilson.
Here.
Patrick Brown.
Here.
Mayor Bulen Bogus.
Present.
And Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
And we also have Jim Page today and Samuel Hall.
Right before we move on to the agenda, I do want to recognize that there are going to be multiple folks that are leaving this board and want to take just a moment to thank them for their service. Charles Smith. Chris Walton is not here unfortunately. Dan Marlin. Bushy Beck to have some as well. And Kenny Freeling Bogus. A lot of years of service to RPC. Thank you very much and believe big shoes to be filled. All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Smith, second.
Second.
Second by Wiltshire. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Do we have any audience participation this morning? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 28th?
So moved, Lou.
Second.
Second, Lou.
Second by Lou, all right. Discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. All right. I have a motion to approve, excuse me, the January, February Consolidated Financial Report.
So moved.
Second, Marlin.
By Smith, second by Marlin. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Got a list of bills. Orion, you have some comments on these?
No comments. No comments, just that, yeah, we're busy with the needs provisionary community services on the LIPE program right now, so you guys see higher levels, I can't hear you so shit with that. But no, nothing that stands out.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept in place on file the list of bills, February and March 28th?
So moved, Smith.
Louis Smith, second.
Second, Brown.
And Brown. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. All right. Approval of recommended personnel policy manual revisions. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Smith.
Louis Smith. Second.
Second, Lou.
Second, Lou. Any comments with regard to the revisions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Chair Summers.
Yes.
Did we go back and do the consolidated radio show reports?
Oh.
Number five.
All right, I'm sorry.
We approved it, you just want us to have him talk about it?
Oh, you did approve?
Yeah, he approved.
Oh, we missed that, sorry.
All right, we've approved the Personnel Policy Manual Revisions. Approval of a correction plan. Kristi, do you have any comments regarding this?
I don't necessarily have any comments. The corrective action plan is to address our underdevelopment for our four-year Coimber Millian County classrooms. Our challenge lies in our inability to find qualified staff, and so it's difficult to open classrooms when we can't hire qualified teachers. So this corrective action plan is our, it just outlines our proactive measures to recruit and retain staff.
Something to add to that too. So we took over the program in those three counties November 1st.
Correct.
When we applied for the funding, we had requested to get about, I think, six months of transition period, but the feds only gave us three months. Not only that, from November 1st when we took over, it took several months for us to get licensing from DCFS and other licensing authorities to the point that we actually had to reach out to the governor's office to intervene, and that ended up speeding up the licensing approval. But it took from November 1st to about March for us to actually get licensing to open classrooms in those three counties. We have provided documentation to that effect to the feds in terms of, we, there were no children in the classrooms for that entire period of time. So I would say besides staffing, probably, you know, that has some impact on our ability to enroll children. So we're working through it. This is something we went through for our program here in Champaign County, so it's just part of the process.
Steve?
Yes.
Thank you, Kristi. Can't see that. Very good. The corrective action plan, so what's the timeline to accomplish your plan?
So we have 30 days to submit the corrective action plan, and then we have one year to implement it. And then we continue to be on kind of a watch basis for, I think, three years after that, where they just kind of check in with us. They also provide us with training and technical assistance regularly to walk us with that.
It's one year to submit it?
One year to reach 100% enrollment.
Enrollment, okay.
Yes.
That's the goal?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Debbie, I've lost my place. Did I get a motion in a second on that before we moved? Did I receive a motion in a second on that before we moved to discussion? Any further questions? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Program updates. Do I have a motion to accept in place on file the program division updates?
So moved.
So moved, Smith, second. Second.
Second, Lou.
Second, Lou. Is there any discussion? Any comments from staff?
Mr. Summers, before I move on, I misunderstood. Do we approve the corrective action plan? We do need a motion in a second.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was sure. All right, for corrective action, a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Chuck will make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second for corrective action. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, can we verify that we voted on the item A, recommended personnel policy?
Yes, Mr. Summers, Mayor Smith, and Ms. Lo.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second for corrective action. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Post same sign, motion carries, thank you. All right, we're still on the program division updates, we had a motion in a second. And we have reports from staff, so.
Orion, go ahead.
Yes, I have one, I guess, small update. So on April 10th, I did a notifying to Luso and Tammy that I put in my notice of resignation. My last day here actually is May 9th, and I'm continuing to work with Tammy and all the fiscal staff on that transition, what it looks like, to make sure everything goes smoothly. I just want to thank you guys all for our charity. I've had to work with RPC and the county as well, so. That's all. Going to miss all of you.
Thank you.
We'll miss you more than you know.
If I may, I'll just give a brief update. I know throughout April, there was a lot of federal information about LIPE, and we did put out a press release and let everyone know that locally, we are continuing to provide the LIPE program. We do indeed still have funding to support that program at this moment. It is quickly, we are quickly going through that funding. We anticipate that it very well may be exhausted in May, and at this moment, we don't anticipate any additional funding. But at this time, we are continuing to administer and have the LIPE program actively in our community.
Thank you. Yes. Chair Jeff.
Thanks, Steve. I would actually like at least hear one or two minutes from each of these program updates rather than bypass it. My preference. Any objection to that?
If they're prepared to provide an overview, that would be.
I'm prepared. I got to talk about Kristi's comment here with all of our hiring we've been doing.
Do you have any specific question, or you're just looking for general?
I'm just looking for an update from the department heads to get a better understanding of where they are in their department, given the changes that are happening. Thank you.
Okay, then I guess Orion has told us that he's leaving. I guess he wants to give us a little bit more information before his departure. That would be great. We'll start at A and work our way down.
I mean, yeah, if you guys have any questions, yeah, just let me know. It primarily just came down to, I wasn't actively looking for a position or anything. I had a known former boss reach out to me, and just an opportunity arose that just seems best at this time. But yeah, I mean, yeah, if you have any questions or want to discuss, just let me know. As far as other fiscal updates, I am working on finalization of the CEFA draft for CLA's upcoming on here for 2024. I'm hopeful to have that done here either at the end of this week or probably Monday. And so once we get that over to them, that's when they identify which programs they want to test in more detail. Usually they select two to three programs for the single lot of testing. And so, yeah, we're trying to get through that process, and I'm hoping they'll have that all figured out and be able to get started with working with the fiscal staff on the testing part. Also working on, I've had, I've been working with Travis on rolling forward of the county's budget projections for next year, so that way I can go ahead and work with staff and all the directors to go ahead and get started on working on next year's accounting budget for RPC's portion. So that parts of process. And then the only other slight note that I had, I know back like December financials when those were being discussed, we were seeing delays with the DOE funding, or DOE bill funding, where the fed hadn't released that funding to the state. So therefore, with our ICER program specifically, we weren't receiving approximately 70% of the reimbursements that we were submitting for to the state. And then you'll see like that basically inflated with our February financials here, where we got up to about 1.23 million. Thankfully, at this point, they've, the feds officially released the funding, states immediately passed it down to us, and we've received at this point all of the reimbursements we've been asking for. And then as far as like all other programs and agencies, we haven't experienced any significant delays with reimbursement at this time.
Move them down, I guess.
Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Orion. Proud parent of a golden doodle.
Oh, yep. I forget about the language on the cup too sometimes. I feel like I need to take that from him.
So for succession planning, what's taking your place, or what's the timeline?
So right now, it's primarily been, I've been working on like a finance director manual to list out, break down everything that I do. I've been working with Tammy, along with a couple of the fiscal staff to help out in the inner end with basically handling as much of the responsibility as possible until someone else can fill the position. Tammy did, yes, if you want to speak on it, as far as the job posting and.
We do have a job posting out. It is scheduled to close May 2nd, I believe. We've received four applications, I think, three of which are of interest for interviews at this point, so we are looking to hire as soon as possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, and I just want to start out, Orion, I'm going to miss you terribly, but I wish you the very, very best. And that's why we have the whole HR team. We have discussed this more than once. All right, so good morning, everyone. Included in your packet today is the Personnel Transaction Report representing new hires, exits, and position reassignments from February 9th, 2025 to April 5th, 2025. We currently have 361 active employees, which includes 33 work experience participants. We have hired 14 employees during the reporting period, and an additional nine employees were hired since April 5th for a total of 23 recent new hires, and another 12 employees are completing the pre-employment process. So if any of you are doing the math, we are managing 35 new hires right now, which is phenomenal productivity, particularly with the challenges that we are facing with lack of qualified teachers. Thank you for nodding. I appreciate that. With the challenges that we have with a national shortage of qualified teachers. The team, management team, HR, they're really just bringing out everything that we can to, as Mr. Wilson asked, our goal is to get these positions filled as soon as possible, always. The HR department has been focused on several staffing strategies, of course, including to fill the 63 vacancies that we have with Head Start, Community Services, ICER, and Fiscal. We are working diligently on our talent acquisition strategies, including several hiring events such as the Vermillion Advantage, DAC, John Fair, that was yesterday, and we are also hiring, hosting hiring events in the very near future at West Champaign, Head Start, Danville again, and Rantle. We continue to experience positive trends with turnover. Our current turnover rate for this time of year is 7%, which is a very good indicator that we are on track to reduce our turnover rate of 24%, another few percentage points by the end of the year. So we're all crossing fingers, okay. The HR team, with several amazing volunteers here at RPC and board members, hosted the Employee Recognition Event at the I Hotel earlier this week. I'm seeing a bunch of smiles and, I'm going to be honest, yesterday, I was icing my knees, but it was an amazing event. It was excellent turnout, the surveys are coming in from staff, and they're all very, the majority are very, very positive. So I just want to thank the board members that were able to come to the event, and I think it was a huge morale booster, and it was a culture, it was a culture event, and just, I'm still overwhelmed with how much fun we had this week. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Becky, I was very glad to see that the room fell off the way it did. You got a full participation in that room, so it was nice to be there and be with you guys. I enjoyed it immensely.
You did. You know what, thank you so much, Mayor. I do want to add that our employee who won the Living Our Values Award, so the exceptional individual who are board members, Katina, Patrick, Tammy helped, they chose this individual. You elected the individual with the heart of the RPC and the compassion for everything she does, Angela, Angela Lewis, and I've seen many videos out there on social media. She is elated, and we have a winner. She's amazing. So thank you, thank you all for helping us out.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on the nominations, and just reading the summary about her, everything was just amazing, and it's what we want to see, and we want our families to experience as well, so excellent, job well done. The recognition ceremony was amazing. I left really full emotionally, spiritually, and I.
Thank you so much, Katina, that means a lot.
Jeff, do you have something else?
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Becky. It was a wonderful event yesterday, and thanks for doing that. I'm sure all the employees were totally excited. So is this every year?
We hope to host similar events every year, but it's always determined on, you know, funding availability. We will do something every year, whether it is a full-blown, you know, conference at a hotel. We're never quite sure until we address funding availability, but we always hope so, for sure. But thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, Kristi, since Brandy's not here, do you have anything else that you can add for the matter? I know you're struggling to get staff.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot. We've got, yeah, we're working a lot still on our DFI programming. We've got, we just finished the renovations of one of our playgrounds at our Gilman Center, and we are working on a kitchen renovation at our Campbell Center. So those are a couple of our bigger projects. But all our sites, as Silento indicated, are up and running, and the staff are really, really happy to have kids back in the building, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa.
I'll just add, as relates to funding, I know that's on folks' minds with regard to a coming year. Right now, we are in the process of a number of renewal grants for what we refer to as FY26. Most of our grants will start in July. We have no indication that any state or local funding will be changing. We actually have a new opportunity that we've been awarded locally to, I think I referenced this in our last meeting, to administer or manage and run a emergency overflow, essentially self-serve for families with children. So that'll be a new grant. It will be a one-time private program. The only grants that we officially have been awarded prior to federal administration change were Housing Urban Development HUD grants. So those are just up in the air right now. We had communication, but we haven't officially received any contracts. I anticipate we will receive contracts, but there could be some changes. Those usually, they will start in July upon contracts.
Thank you. Rita is not here now. Justin, a little bit about workforce development, I guess.
Sure. I have two boards that oversee our work, a chief elected official board, which is the five executives of each of our five counties, and then a workforce board, whose members are appointed by the CEOs. Mr. Summers became the chair of the CEO board in March, so. Thank you for taking that on.
You're welcome.
And it should be a fun year. We are working on a pilot with two state agencies and two universities around professionals' development for people that are providing career services. I'm kind of writing that white paper and doing training with our staff and providing insight from a ground level. So that is things like how to develop a helping relationship, how to use labor market information, understanding career theory. These things are important to our staff and our division. And I just want to throw out there that if any of you have groups in your city that might benefit from professional development around workforce development, so nonprofit, local government, education, and you want to bring them together for a four-hour, eight-hour workshop for the fall, I'd be available to work with you on that if you do the outreach and I show up to train. But that can be fun, so just trying to get this information out there. There's a lot of well-meaning people in the workforce development space that don't really know how to do it well, so we just want to make sure we continue to bring this up here. The apprenticeship grant from the state came out yesterday. That's a five-year project with the Department of Labor. It identifies an apprenticeship specialist in each local workforce area. RPC has been that specialist since around 2022. Our workforce board created a registered apprenticeship for that staff member. We organized the local business team with the Chamber and Parklands and state agencies. The NOFO calls out, one person in the area that's supported by the board can apply for this funding, so we plan on applying for it again. We have support from the workforce board. We'll continue to be the specialist for our area and lead that business team. So I'll have to write that next week. I'm going to take a little break. It's my one-year marriage anniversary.
Congratulations.
So that flew by, that's wild. So I'm going to take a couple days, and I'll come back, and I'll write that NOFO when I get back. We have been busy outside of Champaign during rural information sessions in Fort Erycoy, Douglas, and I, we had our first event this week, and that was well-attended by local government and economic development, different people in education, workforce development, and human services. We continue to go around our region and the rural counties hosting events in order to increase the visibility and usage of federal and state workforce investments, and so that's going well. Lastly, I'll just, as a reminder, the main time that people in our area will apply for job training funds is during the summer, when they're going to school in the fall. So just a heads up, that starts in June usually, and I'll just continue to say that that application window for June is coming up, and that's primarily where we're going to get most of the, we're going to recruit most of the adults for job training programs. So those are all the updates I have.
Thank you.
Questions, Steve?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Congratulations, Justin.
Oh, Mayor, or something else.
Maybe you have 50 more. Question on workforce development.
Sure.
Is there, is there kind of like a gap program, development program, that transitions people that want to be in the labor force, carpenters, union, all those unions, when they have a gap even passing the apprenticeship exam? Is there some type of program that's supporting the trade unions to educate the people that want to be in the trades but aren't able to meet the standard to be an apprentice? Do you understand my question?
I do. There's basically two things locally, well, maybe three things locally that I can think of. One is Parkland's Highway Construction Careers Training Program, and that's a pre-apprenticeship that is recognized and facilitated, I think, by the Department of Transportation. So you've come to my building. At the end of that building is the Highway Construction and Training Program, and if you go inside of it, there's a full house inside of a classroom, and people, there's cohorts throughout the year, and people that come into that pre-apprenticeship program, they do some classroom instruction, but then they also work on that house, installing toilets, installing pipes, installing, I don't know the right terms. They do the electrician work and some of the HVAC work. Yes. So they get hands-on experience, but then they also get remediation for basic skills in math and reading, and then job readiness training too. And so the hope there is to prepare someone through a pre-apprenticeship to apply to be in an apprenticeship. The other one is Youth Build through the Housing Authority. So Youth Build is a program, I think it's funded by HUD, but that's another pre-apprenticeship program for the construction trades, and so the Housing Authority of Champaign runs that, and that has cohorts throughout the year. Those folks, we have a relationship with HAC and with the construction program where anyone that's coming out of that that's doing well, that wants to go into our adult training, we can help them with an associate's in construction management, so we work with HAC and with a construction training program. If folks want to get that associate's degree, once they get those remediation skills. The third thing that I can think of locally is. third thing that I can think of locally is we have the East Central Illinois Building Construction Trades President on our workforce board, and we've worked with him, we are working with him on a youth pre-apprenticeship program. And that's, again, remediation specifically for certain populations. And so we had our first pilot last year and we're continuing to work on that and we want to scale it. And so some of that apprenticeship work that's being funded by the state is really going through the East Central Illinois Building Construction Trades Program that we're working with them on a pilot because we have that community relationship. I'm sure there's other things going on, but those are the three things that I'm kind of aware of.
Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Tyler, any updates with data and technology?
Yeah, just a few updates on a couple of projects for data and technology. We're currently building the interactive web maps for the planning community development, housing transportation index grant project that's due in August. And we're training in COAT's member agencies, staff on open source GIS best practices. We had a three-hour session last week where we trained with a couple of our staff, I think a dozen people from the member agencies. We are looking into third-party companies to fill the reporting gaps in the UKG timekeeping system alongside the county. Our AKS cloud migration project, GOLITE, has been paused due to key staff being unavailable in our division. And we are continuing work on it. And we're in Illinois, a geographic analysis tool, providing those staff. Answer any questions?
Not hearing any questions. Moving on to our remote attendee, Paul, are there any updates that you have with regard to indoor climate research and training program?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. A pleasure to be here. So just a few quick updates. Probably the most important based on the questions that have been asked here is obviously much of our funding does originate, at least with the federal government. At this point, none of our active projects that are directly with, say, US Department of Energy or HUD have been affected. You know, we have not had any attempts, there have not been any attempts to pull back that funding. We've actually in the last couple of months gotten a contract with HUD that we did not have before. So those things are all moving forward. So no loss of funding there. The primary impact we've had in terms of the federal landscape is that we have several proposals and contracts that had been selected for funding, but not yet through the full contracting process that we're just in a holding pattern on, that we're waiting for review comments on proposals, we're waiting for contracts to be executed, but nothing has been, we've not been told that anything has been pulled back. As you heard from Orion, we, the funding, the bill funding that we were waiting for for our training program did start to flow again. Some of our projects that we're waiting on are also bill funding and so kind of just waiting for that to be more fully flowing. Again, at this point, I have no reason to believe that there'll be any adverse outcomes there. We are in the process of hiring one new trainer for the training program. We have been doing interviews with multiple candidates, hope to make a decision soon. I'm confident that we will make a successful hire out of that search. We are working with Parkland College on their CJA program. We're doing training for a cohort of CJA enrollees through our weatherization training program. We were contacted by Parkland, I believe it was just last week or maybe the end of the week before, asking if we wanted to continue the partnership into next year. They definitely do want to. We have said that yes, we do. So we're going to be working with them on budget and scope to continue our partnership with Parkland for next year. We also actually have one of the CJA programs that's down in Carbondale also interested in working with us. So we're going to be talking with them, I believe, next week about how that might look. So we've got that going on. One other thing that I just, it's, I find kind of enjoyable, maybe, the state weatherization program recognizing the change in climate at the federal level. They very much want to have an analysis done of what our weatherization at the state level, not just in RPC, but the state level, weatherization program, the impact that that has on employment on the labor market. And it sounds as though there's, there are folks in Rita's planning group that are able to do that work. So it looks like we're going to be having a bit of an internal to RPC cross-division partnership on making that happen, which is something that I really look forward to. Just, I think it's great when we have the opportunity to work with other divisions within the organization. That's what I have. Thank you.
Any questions, Jeff?
You know me well, I always have a question. We can get along together really well. What, big picture, what is the goal of the indoor climate research program? Am I going to have better air in my house or whatever, or breathe safer? What's the goal?
That's, that's a really great question. I really appreciate that question. So what, the way I talked about it is that everybody, regardless of circumstance, should have a home that supports their well-being. That is not one of the additional stressors in their lives as they try to make ends meet. Doesn't matter, low income, high income, everybody should have a quality home with an indoor environment that is efficient and healthy. So our goal is to help support people around the country, potentially around the world, help households have indoor environments that are healthy, that do not make them sick, and are efficient, do not cost a lot to operate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Paul. If you would, if you would, please say hello to your parents for me. I know them through their time when they were in Champaign. So say hi to Joyce in particular.
Will do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Tammy?
Good morning. First, I wanted to give you an update on our ICERT facility search. I let you know at our last meeting that we were doing a facility condition assessment for the space adjacent to the Home Depot, and Bailey Edwards completed that FCA. Unfortunately, the amount of repairs and improvements that needed done at that facility were estimated to be between eight and $12 million, and that doesn't even include ICERT's build-out. So as you can imagine, DCEO said, no, thank you. So that facility is no longer under consideration, although DCEO and ICERT have looked at three facilities in the last week, one of which was the Bergens Administrative Center, the Jim Pod, one which is the former Rokeem Space and Rent Tool, and also space adjacent to the Hobby Lobby in Champaign. So, you know, more information is being gathered about those three spaces to be considered. And then I wanted to give an update to the commission about the status of the fiscal year 2020 for audit. The letter from the commissioners to the Champaign County Board was presented to the board in March. And I did bring a copy of that letter and also the letter that Delito and I had sent to the county board because I knew we were going to have a couple of new people here. So if you like a copy of either one of those letters, let me know. The county board has proactively taken a couple of steps to try and help ensure that the audit will be completed in a timely manner, which is, everyone knows, is September 30th. So, and we're, we are very appreciative of that for those of you who are here from the county board. First, they have engaged the outside auditor, CLA, to repair the broken spreadsheet. And secondly, they have engaged CLA to actually repair the ACER. So, and I did watch the meeting last night. It's my understanding that it's at a cost of $75,000. Recurring costs would be the preparation of the ACER at $20,000 and the rebuilding of the spreadsheet is, you know, a one-time cost. I did want to mention, I know there was a comment at the county board meeting last night, I believe from Mr. Barney, that indicated that those costs could be passed on to outside departments, one of which is the regional planning commission. We actually pay for about a third of the cost of the outside audit and also a third of the cost for operation of the auditor's office. So these costs were, you know, unknown costs for us. I had had some conversations with Travis and Michelle, expressing concern about, you know, how those costs were going to be covered. So I just wanted to say on the record that, you know, RPC had not planned for those additional costs. And although we're very grateful for, you know, the county board's proactive measures, I am concerned about that additional impact on our funding. I actually wanted to, I typed out what I wanted to say so I could keep this professional and not bring any emotion into my comments. So even with these additional proactive measures that the county board has undertaken, there's a significant amount of work that needs to be completed by the auditor's office before CLA can, you know, undertake its work to prepare the ACER. We actually had a meeting with CLA, our internal audit committee meetings were kicked off last week, and it was very clear from that meeting that we were not prepared to hand over our work papers to CLA by April 24th, which was yesterday. And so CLA basically said on the call, you know, the county needs to let us know when you're going to have everything ready to hand over to us. So we had an internal meeting yesterday and there are several things that are in the portal that CLA has identified that they need that have not yet been submitted and are past due as of yesterday. So I just wanted to, you know, let the commissioners know that there is concern about timeliness because we're, you know, as of yesterday, behind schedule. One of the other things that has not been completed are the bank reconciliations. And I know that Orion had some communication with the new treasurer and chief deputy treasurer yesterday, just kind of bringing them up to speed because Orion has been helping Anna, who was brought on by the county to get those bank reconciliations caught up. He's been working with her. And it is our understanding that those are not going to be done by the end of the month, although we don't know what that timeline looks like yet. So since the commission had asked for status reports, at this time, I'm reporting to you that we still have ongoing concerns about the audit being at risk of not being completed on time just based on missed deadlines and, you know, things that have not yet been submitted to CLA.
Questions, comments? Jeff?
Hey, I'm on the county board. Thank you for a frank discussion. I'm not sure that I'm maybe, generally I'm in a left field, so maybe they don't know. Does it seem like there's only a few people on the county board that understands the first deadline is missed and there's some gaps? Or where are we with trying to recover? Is there a way we can recover?
Well, the meeting was yesterday. So it's, it's very apparent at this point where we're at. And I'm sure that our finance chair and probably our board chair will be having some further discussions with the auditor's office to see what steps they're taking to move forward in preparing the documents that they're going to need to submit to CLA and what kind of a timeline that would look like.
Followed. Maybe I'll be a little blunt myself. I'm glad that the county board took actions to help shore up the ongoing process. So in my opinion, this, this is my blunt opinion, discussions are nice. However, corrective action plans are better, right? Or action steps where this is what I need, this is the item I need, and this is the date I need it, and this is the quality that I need that report to be. Just my opinion, based on many years of project management, I just don't understand all the promises that were made last year. And already in the first quarter, it seems like there's a challenge with the auditor's office. I'm just curious, or other offices too, right? So anyway, I'm glad you have a discussion tomorrow, but I would encourage you to walk away with actual signed commitments for your deliverables that you need, which I don't know what they are, but I believe that would be appropriate. This is my comment.
Well, both the executive's office and I'm sure the board chair will do what we can do. We are, however, dealing with a county-wide elected office that we really do not have leverage to force actions to take place. And that is the unfortunate truth. Go ahead, Tammy.
So just to keep everybody a little bit more in the loop, and Orion, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have reinstituted the regular meetings, like they had fallen off after you were no longer in the office. So last year, we were forced to kind of take the auditor at his word because we weren't having these weekly meetings where we could kind of peer pressure everyone into, hey, you're not, you don't have this. You've got to turn this in. So now we know what's in the portal. And I am not Pollyanna thinking that everything's suddenly going to be in the portal next week. But when you're dealing with an independent elected who is kind of like a cat on a leash, the more you push, the more they're going to dig in. There's handholding and there's peer pressure. And that's where we are right now. We know what, we know what they need to be able to prepare it outside. We're hopeful that we can get it through sooner. And CLA knows who we're working with. So even though the deadline was yesterday, they, I, I do not believe they ever thought they would have everything by yesterday. So for whatever that's worth. But next week, the finance chair and I are meeting. Mr. Wilson's welcome to join us with the auditor. And we are going to do everything we can to rebuild trust, or at least, you know, negotiation lines. And then from there, we are going to keep his feet to the fire on, hey, this is in the portal, or this isn't in the portal. And the weekly meetings, we believe, are the best way we have to get that canary in the cave telling us if it's, we're, how, telling us where we stand.
Couple things. First, I'm, I'm reluctant to blame the county board because this is a multiple-year problem and he is an independent elected official. So I appreciate all the work you all are doing to try to push this along and looking at it earlier in the process. Frankly, I feel like, for lack of a better word, some public shaming here. Like, I appreciate, Tammy, that you wrote down what you wanted to say so that you could be calm about it. But we need to do something that moves the needle. So, you know, a copy of RPC's letter to the News Gazette or, you know, something that, because we end up burying the brunt of the inaction every year. And it, over the long haul, impacts this agency's credibility with our funders. And that's not acceptable. and that's not acceptable. And so, I feel like we have tried the polite way to get this done, and even if he, you know, I mean, action steps like that work with employees. They're not going to work with an independent elected. And even if he signs it, I don't believe he's going to do it when he says he's going to do it, because he has a long history of not. So, my preference, and I don't know if we need a motion, but I mean, I, I feel like we need to make this public. And I realize we're, we're on a public access channel, and people can find out, but I, I think we need to shout it from the rooftops, so that there is some motivation to get this done in a timely manner. That's my two cents.
Chuck? I've been with you folks a long time, and this is getting old.
Yeah.
It's getting real old. I don't see why there can't be accountability held in an elected office. And it's jeopardizing a lot of money to these communities, and somebody needs to buck up here and take their job seriously, meet their obligations, because there's just too much at stake. So, I hate to be so blunt about it, but it's time. So, whatever actions you folks can take legally, or any other way, I would suggest you. Chuck, you start, I'll show you that.
In fact, it affects all constituents. Oh, excuse me.
I just want to also reiterate, I agree with Deb and Chuck, because I know this has been a, a very frustrating thing for me, are the years that I've been on this, sitting on this board also, and, and I'm one of the longtime timers here too, and this has been an ongoing conversation over and over and over again. And I agree, if there's more that we can do, and I, and I totally agree with Deb, that it, it's time to say it loud and clear out to the public. And there's so many people in this community that relies on these programs through RPC that, you know, are at risk if our funding is jeopardized. And I know the one day that I spoke with the auditor myself, and I was amazed at how little he understood about what we do here even. So, that's very concerning also, that he's in control of the funding and, and putting us at risk. And so, I, I, yeah, whatever we can do, if it's, if it's legal actions, or whatever. I understand it's an elected position, it's frustrating that, you know, he got reelected, and, but it is what it is, and so now we just have to figure out how to get it out to the public of what's really going on there, so.
Steve?
Go ahead.
I would suggest drafting a commentary and submitting it to Jeff DeLassio at the News Gazette, and lining out what the implications for this are, and what the costs are to the community.
Good point.
And it can be signed by all of us?
Signed, yes.
Yeah.
On behalf of the board.
The most egregious part of this is it affects our constituents that are most in need. Yes.
Just a tactical matter. In terms of who drafts it, I have already been one of his chief, chief antagonists. So, I don't know that it would be as powerful if it was coming from, if it's coming from outside people who are not like, "Oh, noted critic Jennifer Locke, noted critic Jeff Wilson, we are noted critics Steve Summers." Chief critic, I think, is the way you'd say it. But if it's, if it's for people who might be, you know, seen as not a chief critic of his, coming out and being like, "Look, this is how it's affecting us, this is how it's affecting our constituents, this is how it's affecting Head Start, this is how everybody, everyone." So, if we hear from all points of the county, I think that that's more powerful than if it's the same old, same old squawking at him.
Diane?
Well, if it's signed by the board, it's not one individual, it's, it's all of us here.
Yeah, it is. Rolling the pot together.
I'm thinking a sustained campaign, because the way this, the way this has worked before is somebody gets, writes a letter to the editor, or my turn, or whatever, and then he goes to book club with his friend who writes opinion pieces, and then the public is informed via the opinion piece that's not fact-checked at all, because it's opinion. Is that probably enough?
Jeff?
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Dan, for saying that. Wonderful. I agree, the public campaign to hold this individual's feet to the fire is appropriate. And I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is the public is, they're not aware of all the challenges, right? Yeah, they're not aware of all the programs that are hurt by this. And the people that are hurt by it don't understand why they're hurt by it. So, I'm, I wonder, just to think it out loud, we could do spots on Penny for Your Thoughts, right? WDWS, Penny for Your Thoughts, have conversations, have someone talk about the role of RPC, the need of RPC in the community, what we do from Head Start to Work Development, to all that stuff. And then you always end up with, "However, comma, this may not go well for us in the community if XYZ doesn't get his job done." I mean, you can always start on the positive, right? "This is what we do, this is what we want to do, we're here for the community. However, comma, we have a huge roadblock that's been consistently there," and just mention it. And then, I know what happens after that. So, anyway, just a thought.
Any further thoughts or comments? All right, thank you for the updates. We've got a motion in a second already. All in favor of stepping, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign, or if you can carry it. Let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. Really appreciate the robust conversation regarding the impact that the lateness of the audit would have on RPC's ongoing operations and services in the community. First thing I just want to point out is the fact that since we have a number of new commissioners going to be working with Tammy, for us to schedule orientation for the new commissioners, there is a lot that we do here at the RPC, and I don't think it's fair for new commissioners to come to the meetings and we talk about all these, these issues. So, we will, we will be putting together an orientation for new commissioners, so you get a full breadth of what, what it is we do in the community, and, and then take any questions from you during that time. I think from my count, including the two new county board members, we may have maybe seven new commissioners, so that's almost half of the commissioners. Second item, so Sunday, I will be joining our two mayors and about nineteen of us from Champaign County that will be going to Washington, DC. And we'll be having member meetings with our congressional delegation, as well as with the administration, to advocate for various projects, initiatives that benefit Champaign County as a whole. This is a, a private-public consortium of organizations that is facilitated by the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce. So, looking forward to that. Back to RPC. So, as you know, the continuing resolution was passed for FY 2025, basically appropriating funding for the rest of the year through September 30th. Within that, most of the programs were funded at the FY 2024 levels. And as you've heard from the various division directors, so far, funding is flowing. There's been some delays here and there, but all in all, we have been fortunate that most of the funding has been flowing. There are, however, some grants that were applied for last year that we have not heard. So, for instance, Head Start applied for its funding, which is primarily for Champaign County. And we have not yet heard if we've received those funds. We should hear something, maybe next month, if not June. But just to let you know what's at stake for that, it's about maybe eight, nine million dollars in federal funding. And in Champaign County, we serve about 531 children. So, we are hopeful that the funding will come through, so that we can continue to provide services in Champaign County. The other thing with Head Start is that, as a result of some of the restructuring happening at the federal level, so we are part of what's called Region Five, or we were part of Region Five, which consists of six states, Illinois, Indiana, Wisconsin, Michigan, Ohio, Minnesota. So, that region office, which was based in Chicago, was eliminated, and we will be consolidated with another region. So, the issue there is the staff at the federal level that we dealt with are no longer there. So, we do anticipate that there will be delays in hearing back from the federal government on the grants that I, the grant that I just referenced in my comments. The other thing too, and I did hear, I think, from some of the mayors, at the federal level, the LAHEEP staff within the Office of Community Services, which is within the Department of Health and Human Services, all of those staff were let go. And we don't get funding directly from the federal government for LAHEEP. That goes through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and then it comes down to, 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 to us, because it's a block grant. So, we are hopeful that there won't be delays in getting funding to the states. But what we do know, for the current year's funding, FY 2025, there's about 10% of the LAHEEP funds that are owed to the states, and that has not yet been processed. We think that maybe that has to do with the staffing capacity, but hopefully that will be, will be resolved. The other thing, as far as the president's budget, which I believe should be released sometime next month for FY 2026, there were some news stories on some information out of that budget that was leaked to the press. So, Head Start, it was reported that Head Start would be proposed for elimination as well as, as well as LAHEEP. So, there are a lot of organizations at the national level that have already began to do some advocacy around that. But again, I just want to be clear that the budget has not been released yet, but this was information that was reported in some of the news sources in the last two or three weeks. So, we are, what I will be doing is be reaching out to many of the municipalities, as well as the county board, to see if there would be any support to pass resolutions in support of the funding and what the funding does in our communities. So, I've already drafted resolutions for the Champaign County Board, for LAHEEP and Head Start, as well as the city councils, and I'll be sending that once we get done with this meeting. And if those are passed, the goal would be to get those to our congressional delegation, as well as to send that to, to the administration. The other thing too, is if, if, if there is no federal LAHEEP program, we are fortunate here in Illinois to have state LAHEEP funds that are, as a result of our regulated utilities assessing a surcharge on their residential, commercial, and industrial customers. And I think right now, the level of funding is about the same as what the federal funding is. The unfortunate part, though, is there would be parts of the state that would not receive LAHEEP, because they don't have participating utilities. And so, if it's areas that are served by a municipal utility that's not contributing to the state fund, they will not be able to receive those funds. Or if you are a community served by a rural electric co-op that's not participating, that would be the same. So, but all in all, there would be, there would be a LAHEEP program in Illinois, because we do have state, state funding in place. With that, that is basically what I had to, to report.